Evening and welcome to our city council meeting on this November 21st. Madam Deputy Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Childs?
Here.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
Ms. Wilder? Mr. Foyce?
Here.
All right, thank you. Would you all join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. The pledge this evening will be led by, I guess, Major Slash. Major, right now, Major, so.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as well as the minutes of November 7th, 2022, regular session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we have a minutes. Someone take the first resolution?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution approving appointment of Joe Leibold to the position of police chief, along with an employment agreement for the same and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. So just really quickly, before the council votes, we had put out interviews, put out the job vacancy notice across the country. We had a couple people apply for the position and we had interviews with just a, with three of the people that applied. And without a doubt, Major, after this vote, would be chief, stood far and above the other applicants. And so that was the process this time. So council, would you, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Right, thank you. And now we will have the swearing in, so would you please join me? All right, first we have the swearing in portion. And Chief, would you please raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Joseph Leibold.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the position of police chief.
Of the position of police chief.
In the city of Waterloo.
In the city of Waterloo.
Black Hawk County, Iowa.
Black Hawk County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Right, and we have one other. And as part of this, I have a reading that outlines something that one of our captains felt was appropriate as well. And it says, "To all who shall see these presents greeting, know ye that reposing special trust and confidence in the patriotism, valor, fidelity, and abilities of Joseph Leibold, appointed as police chief for the Waterloo Police Department. This officer will therefore carefully and diligently discharge the duties of the office of police chief by doing and performing all manner of things thereto belonging. I do strictly charge and require this officer to support the Constitution of the United States of America and the court of the state of Iowa and faithfully and partially, to the best of his ability, discharge all the duties of the office of police chief." And so Chief, before we have comments, we have the penning ceremony. And then we'll have some comments from the chief. You want me to take that or you put it in your pocket? All right, so first let's have some comments, sir.
Well, I want to thank the mayor, the council, the community actually, for all the support they've given me through my career and continue to give myself in the Waterloo Police Department. I want to thank everybody who's mentored me, trained me. I learned so much from everybody I work with, my friends, my family. There's just so much I've learned over the years. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my family. Doing a police officer's job is difficult. Phone calls, getting up in the middle of the night, going to work, missed birthdays, anniversaries, getting called in, being gone for days at a time. My family's tolerated that for 30-plus years and I love them and appreciate them dearly for that. And lastly, I really want to thank the officers. The officers show up every day, strap on their gear, and go to work. They don't know what the day holds for them when they leave and they go out, they bring professionalism, and I'm just immensely proud to be part of them and very proud of the good work that they do each and every day to make Waterloo a better place. So thank you, everybody who's gotten me to this place in my career. I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
And I just want to say. Chief Leibold has all the accolades, 30 years decorated. But the thing that stands out the most about all of those things is that he is an incredible human being. You know, always encouraging, always staying focused on what's most important, loving people within this community, and all of those combined with the experience is going to make him an outstanding police chief for the city of Waterloo. So this is a proud day for us. This is a proud day for the state of Iowa. God bless you, God bless your family, and all the work that you're going to do with the officers in this community. But thank you so much. All right, and his first duty is to leave us right now.
And delegate to Mr. Don't.
Yeah, delegate.
It's appropriate.
If there's cake, you should bring some back out. That's all I'm gonna ask.
Right away, he's delegating. I find that a good quality.
So where's the after-party?
I guess it's shitty. Joe can sure clear a room out.
All right, would someone want to?
Public comments?
Oh, yes. It is now time for public comments, your opportunity to address the city council, mayor, and staff on non-agenda related items. Please come up, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what's on your mind.
I'm Mary Potter, 207 Leland, and all I can say is it's about time. We have a chief.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm here with the same issue. Being illegally and unlawfully evicted from my home. I have a set of papers here where I've applied for housing, then turned down because my eviction is not old enough. Nobody considers the fact that I was there for 11 years. And I want to thank Officer Leibold. He gave me some information out there, but I've been knowing him over 30 years myself. And I congratulate him on becoming the police chief. And I found out from the housing incorporation in Des Moines because I had got approved, I have gotten approved, background checking everything, front apartment, and the tenant, the manager sent a tenant questionnaire to Martin Realtors and they refused to fill out the questionnaire. Something wrong with that picture. I talked to Tony Miller. He's aware of everything that's going on. He tried to get me, they said he wanted me to pay a utility bill like I spoke last week about. I got the money up to pay the utility bill. Tony Miller, which I suppose you all know him, the executive director of the Landlord Association, said if they didn't lift that order, don't pay them anything. They called him back after I talked to them. They said they'd take the money, but they didn't know whether they could lift the order. And they never should have put it on my, or eviction on me anyway. I've been out to the shelter over two months. That's against the rules of the shelter. But because I've been so diligent in looking for housing, they've kept me there instead of putting me out. That's messing with their finances too. And I know somebody on this council or in this building can help me, but they are refusing to. And no one's here with me today but my father above. And that pledge of allegiance, say liberty and justice for all, it should be liberty and justice for some. Because everybody doesn't get justice in the United States of America, especially here in Waterloo. According to statistics, it's the worst place in the world for blacks to live. But I've been here from down south over 30-some years. And what's going on with me now is uncalled for, is unjust, and I'm still seeking justice, but it'll likely have to go to the congressmen, senators, and legislators, and to the justice department in Washington DC. Thank you. And Mayor, you have my most sincerest heartfelt condolences on the loss of your sister. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
So I just have a few things. The first thing I want to say, if I take exception to that this is a bad place for black people, I don't agree with that. As a black person, I happen to find this place phenomenal for us. Do we have our issues? Yes. But that doesn't discount the progress we have made in this city, and we should not discount it. I think people have reached out to attempt to help you with this. So I would say continue to speak with us, continue to speak with the people that are trying to help. But we are not in control of the private realtor. We can only do what we can do. We can't tell them what to do. We have to go through the court system. We have to go through the laws that are established through the Constitution and through what we have written on our books. So I want to help you. Your story, every time you say it, it touches me here. It makes me mad. But I am bound by the law just as much as everyone else in this room is. So we will continue our best to try to help you and to make sure that this situation doesn't happen to anyone else. But again, we are bound by the law just as you are. On a more positive note, December 4th, the Waterloo Cedar Falls Symphony, you know, one of my personal favorite organizations in this beautiful county of ours, is having a concert at Antioch. And it's December 4th at 3:00 PM. They are going to be doing the Nutcracker Suite and the Nutcracker Suite by Ellington, which if you haven't heard that, there's some really cool things in there. It's gonna be a really cool concert. So if you're here for, on December 4th, and you want to see something really special, be at Antioch at 3:00 PM. I am really looking forward to the event. They are actually, they're also doing some work. So if you want to donate towards the event in order to, maybe people who can't afford to purchase tickets to the event, we are, they are taking donations to help other people be able to go to the event. But I'm really excited to have them here in Waterloo in a church to do such a cool event. And the last thing is, if you were not, if you were not present at our, prior to this, our work session, we had a work session on parking for downtown. The presentation is on our Novus page, so if you're interested in seeing how the Reef and Main Street has come together to create a beautiful plan for our downtown parking situation, please feel free to go on to Novus to see that plan. I again thank Reef and Main Street for their work in getting something accomplished so quickly. In government, rarely do things get achieved so quickly, but six months in order to go from what we currently have to a brand-new proposal is still astounding to me. And I'm a little full of emotion today. Just so many positive things have happened today. So thank you for your work, Main Street, Reef, and congratulations to the new chief.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So our job as city councilors is to, as leaders, imagine what could be possible. And if there are things that stand in the way of what is possible now, then it is our duty to make the changes in the laws and how we function. I was very proud to represent our city because our city has led on the issues and not let what is merely on the books confine us. On November 10th, I had the opportunity to represent the city at the first inaugural Green Gala for the Iowa Environmental Council, where the city council and the mayor were awarded the first Community Advocates Award for our work on addressing, among other things, the climate crisis. And I'm very proud that we, as a city, haven't been confined by what others tell us is possible or confined by past thinking, but instead have looked forward. I also had the distinct pleasure of representing the Safe Neighborhoods Commission on Friday at the Systems of Support Conference over at the Vajee Miller Center alongside Commission Member Chief Leibold and Commission Member Michelle Feltes with One City and Momentum. And I'm very proud of the work that that commission is doing. We will be meeting next Tuesday via Zoom with providers in this community about re-envisioning and how we can support those folks who are already doing the tough work of gun violence in our community. We, as community leaders, need to make sure that we are looking not just at what is now, but what is in the future. And I'm very proud of what the city is doing and I'm looking forward to what we'll do in the future.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure if you were gonna address it, since we don't have a council meeting before the first, but you could tell people what's going on that night?
Yes, we will be hosting a State of the City this year again. And it's our opportunity to talk about the progress we've made over this past year and about the future and where we're going to move as a city. It will be at the Waterloo Convention Center. The start time is 5:30 PM and the doors open at 5 o'clock PM. The program will last probably a little roughly about an hour. And so we ask that you come on out and hear about your city, some things you may not know, but yet hear about our future and where we're headed to collectively as a city. We'll also have various departments that will have booths set up, so it gives you an opportunity to stop by the community development booth or stop by the planning booth to kind of see what's taking place in their department. So I'm sorry, I started naming them and then looking to see other faces, but just a great opportunity to celebrate about where we're at and where we're moving as a community. So thank you very much, Mr. Bozen, Councilman Bozen. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comments.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Public comments closed.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to move the consent agenda with the addition of 1A1 bills payment for November 14th, 2022, in the amount of $1,289,659.65. And for November 21st, 2022, in the amount of $5,876,145.85.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second.
And, sir, I ask to have 1A8 pulled for additional information.
Okay, all right. So to, so we, we got a vote on that? Let me just pull it. All right, so all the other items, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a redemption fee of $55.62 for pet owners redeeming their animals from Cedar Bend Humane Society and adjusting the fee to $57.30 on July 1st, 2025, as per agreement with the Cedar Bend Humane Society.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Mr. Bozen?
If I, we could just get Sandy to give us a brief, I know we had a work session on it, but a brief overview. And my confusion is that the summary statement says July 1st it took effect. We're voting on it today. And in the contract that's in our attachments, the contract says August 1st. So my confusion is, is when does this take effect and has it been in effect and are they charging for it prior to us approving it?
Okay, Sandy Greco, Traffic Operations and Animal Control Director. This actually, the contract was submitted by the Humane Society in July after our work session. And I couldn't get it on the agenda to August 1st. So they started charging us August 1st for these rates. So we've been working with them and talking and trying to figure out, to bring it back to council, to say, okay, instead of, instead of pet owners redeeming their animals at $25 or $35, depending on if they've been picked up twice within the year, that we should in turn charge pet owners what the city gets charged every time we take an animal in. So this is what that cost is. And for example, I can give you October. I believe 13.4 animals were redeemed, which means one of them was picked up more than once. And we received $335 for that from the Humane Society. If we would have charged the $55.62, the redemption cost would have been $745.30. That way we recoup what our cost is to the Humane Society. So I shouldn't have had July 1st on there, but that's what the contract said, or that's what we agreed upon. But it actually started August 1st as the contract was signed.
So August 1st, we have been charging or not been charging?
We have been charged since August 1st.
Okay, and would there be any, any issues with us not approving it until today, that we've already billed people for?
We have not billed anybody yet. It's what the Humane Society has charged us.
Charged us? Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
So if we, if it's passed tonight, then we'll start.
Okay, very good. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Just really quickly, we have two appointments today. Do we have Kayla Zwanziger? Are you in the audience today? And what about Sheila Stephan? Are you with us today? Okay, Kayla has been appointed to the position of Administrative Secretary for our Fire Department. And Sheila Stephan has been appointed to the position of Public Works Coordinator within the Public Works Division. So congratulations to both of our newest family and team members. So hopefully you're watching and I want to thank you for joining us. All right, number two, could someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. And that's for the 2022-2023 Residential/Miscellaneous Areas Snow Removal Contract for City-Owned Lots Generally Acquired Through Iowa Code 657A.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I'm sorry, the hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specification, form of contracts, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
Our first bidder was Cedar Valley Lawn Care of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided a 5% bid security. Their total bid was $57.20 per lot, per area. Our second bidder was B&amp;B Lawn Care Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They also provided a 5% bid security. Their total bid was $28.48 per lot, per area.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding bid to B&amp;B Lawn Care, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $28.48 per lot slash occurrence, approving the contract and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the 2022-2023 Residential/miscellaneous Areas Snow Removal Contract for City-Owned Lots Generally Acquired Through Iowa Code 657A, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
All right, thank you. Could someone take number three?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and as request by Cedric Culp to vacate cell and convey 1,960 square feet of city-owned alley right-of-way located south of 500 Ricker Street to Cedric Culp in the amount of $823.20.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of planning, program, and zoning commission.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time in ordinance approving the request by Cedric Culp to vacate an existing 14-foot-wide city-owned alley right-of-way located south of 500 Ricker Street, subject to the retention of a utility easement over the vacated area.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, consider and pass for the second, third times, and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing sale and conveyance of vacated alley south of 500 Ricker Street to Cedric Culp in the amount of $823.20.
Second.
A motion has been made with a couple seconds. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Culp. Got here just in time, no? All done. Alright, number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for sale and conveyance of approximately 1.37 acres of city-owned property located adjacent to 2122 West Ridgeway Avenue, Quickstar Fuel Blending Facility to QuickTrip, Inc. in the amount of $50,000.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this 1.37 acres?
Yeah, I'd just like to introduce myself. My name is Gabe Weiser, here representing Quickstar and QuickTrip in the offer to purchase the 1.37 acres, the 2122 West Ridgeway Avenue, which is just north of our plant site. The purpose of that lot would mainly just be to supply some growth for fleet parking. So just letting you know I'm here without any questions, so thank you.
Alright, do you have an address?
Yeah, my address is 2025 QuickTrip Way, La Crosse, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments about this item going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Not opposed, but alright.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving an offer of purchase agreement in the amount of $50,000 with QuickTrip, Inc. of La Crosse, Wisconsin, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Just had a quick question for Noel. And my question, sir, is how do we come up with this amount? Because like, we, over Deer Creek Investments, we spent $300,000 for 1.55 acres. And now we're selling 1.37 acres for $50,000. And the assessed value on this at the county is considerably higher. So I'm just curious on how we come up with this price point.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. We actually had an appraisal done in this area for land in the rear of property. So we used the comparable price per square foot, I think it was 83 cents a square foot or something like that, of that appraisal.
So would that go for those other lots in that area or just this one because it's behind the?
Just this one because it's behind. The others would be different for the road frontage and all that.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located adjacent to 2122 West Ridgeway Avenue to QuickTrip, Inc. of La Crosse, Wisconsin in the amount of $50,000, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Thank you. Could someone take five and six, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution designating 1.49 acre parcel of formal school property as part of Solent Park. And number six is adopting a resolution approving the City of Waterloo Municipal Golf Rate Fee Schedule for the 2023 season.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Comments about these two items, anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
So for number five, I'm a little concerned about making this into an additional park. This is a good location for potential housing. The park is large already. It doesn't block, it's a good location for housing. And I am very concerned about making this into additional park space. Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Since I'm on the Leisure Services Board, I'd like to respond to that. The, years ago, when the, when the, when the school systems, the, got rid of the property that's now the daycare center, this was deeded to the City of Waterloo. And it was the understanding of that neighborhood that it was going to remain park property. We don't have that much park property there. It looks like that on the parcel. Because five acres of that land belongs to the waterworks. That they, at any given time, they can take that land and put a well on it. And if they do, they'll take the entire five acres. So it's a very small parcel for property development that the neighborhood was under the impression from the original agreements with the school systems that this property was going to remain in the Solent Park proper and be part of the park system. Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
So you say, under the impression, how did they get that impression? Were they told that directly? Is that in the writing? It is a good location for housing. It's a very small location for housing because it, because of the way you said. Because of its shape, you're right. Right. But we have someone here that can answer that question for you from the Park Commission.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Ellen Vanderloo. I live at 3608 Inverness Road in Waterloo. And I have been working on this issue since 2013. And I can tell you that our neighborhood feels very strongly about this park. It's a very small park, but is heavily used by children and people playing soccer, enjoying the playground. And we, several times now, have had petitions presented to the school board and to the city saying, we want this land to be a park. And I thought that it had been resolved back in 2019. But was surprised to find out that when Leisure Services looked at building a new shelter house, that we had to adjust the location because the land belongs to the city, not to the parks. And we need a new, we are going to get a new shelter house. It should be in a location that's convenient for the public to use. And right now, it's, because of the way things have been settled, it has to be to the side, has to be to the back. And I just, I can't tell you how strongly in our neighborhood we feel about wanting this to remain parkland.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I appreciate that because that's what I had not heard yet. So that's, that's what I needed to hear, that this is what the neighborhood wants.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So just for a point of clarification, there is no covenant or written documentation that states that it must remain. Okay, so this is, you got something, Paul, or, okay?
Well, and can I just say too, in 2013, when the school district sold it to the city for $1, that was all our understanding, that it was going to be park.
Yeah, so I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, is there a covenant or restricted date? Is there something on there that's stating that it has to be the, and I'm not saying it should or shouldn't be, I don't have a vote. But been highly successful with redeveloping some of these old school sites. I just want to know if there is something written, that's all I want to know.
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director, not to my knowledge. I'm going to look at Noel because he was involved in the actual property transfer. So can you confirm that, Noel?
Is there a written, is there an official written, okay?
And then just a little bit of history going back to 2019. We did have a number of potential park property sites that some of you were on council at the time. We took tours, we looked at various sites. And then our Leisure Services Commission Park Committee looked at all those. They participated in the tours and so forth. And that committee recommended to the commission that none of those be sold, with the exception of a parcel at the Audubon Park area, which had never been developed into a park. So that was the recommendation of the board. To my knowledge, there was no formal action taken on that, I think, at that point. And Noel, correct me if you, if you would. I think from that point, it's just been, the public's wishes were made known through petitions. And we packed those chambers at a commission meeting and so forth. But to my, to my knowledge, there's nothing that says that that property cannot be developed.
Right, make sure they pack the chambers during budget time too because I definitely need to make sure we continue to take a look at opportunities for number two on our strategic goal, which the community also wants, and that is housing. But there's no formal agreement. The council, all your questions have been satisfied?
As, just one more statement if I could, sir. And that has to do with the five acres that have but Ainsborough, which is half the park. And that, I'm on the waterworks board also. And that's, that parcel belongs to the water, doesn't belong to the waterworks, but it's deeded. Am I correct, Paul? I mean, it belongs to City of Waterloo, but it's, but it's waterworks property.
Correct, it's deeded City of Waterloo, not Board of Park Commissioners.
Correct.
So it is city property and, and, I'll let you finish. You were, you had the floor.
So the issue is, is that if they ever need that property, they're, they're working on a memorandum of understanding to allow it to remain a park. But if they ever need to put a well in, they're going to take the entire five acres. Because of the DNR requirements and the setbacks, and the setbacks from the road, where they, where they put the well, they have to have 200 feet of clearance in all directions. So that park will be cut in half if waterworks ever needs to or desires to put a well in that location.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vanderloo, thank you. Mr. Hudding. Counsel, ready to take a vote on five and six? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Seven and eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sirs?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the rates for shelter rentals in Waterloo Parks effective January 1st, 2023. And the rate is to adopt a resolution approving a REAP grant agreement, number 23-R4-KP with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources in the amount of $193,890 in conjunction with Greenbelt Lake Improvements Project and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Any questions about these two items? Counsel? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Could someone take nine, 10, and 11, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. Number nine is a resolution approving construction plans for paving in storm sewers serving the North Crossing area, bound by Logan Avenue, East Fourth Street, and Rawlston Road, East Donald Street, as submitted by Robinson Engineering Co. of Independence, Iowa. Number 10 is a resolution approving electronic submission of the Tax Increment Finance, TIF, reports to the state of Iowa for fiscal year 2022. And number 11 is a resolution approving certificate to the Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in the FY 2022 Crossroads Waterloo Tax Increment District and place the certification on file.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Anyone with any comments on these three items? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
On the crossroads, one, Noel, are we actually running in the hole on that? We had a negative balance of over a million dollars in one of the paperworks.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. And I'm going to make sure Bridget doesn't tell me I'm wrong, but I believe, yes, we are running in the hole there. So we'll have to look at some different options on that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
And this is more just an ask in general. I think TIF can be kind of complicated for folks. And I think it might be helpful if, in the new year, we could have a work session kind of explaining how each of them are doing and maybe what we're looking at. You know, not giving away any trade secrets, but just so we can be updated as a council and the public about what TIF is doing. Because I know that's a question for a lot of folks out there.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Could someone take 12 through 15, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I move to adopt the following resolutions.
I move to adopt the following resolutions, a resolution approving certification to Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in the fiscal year 2022 Downtown Waterloo Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Tax Increment District and place the file, the certification on file. Number 13, a resolution approving certification of Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in fiscal year 2022 Martin Road Tax Increment District and place the certification on file. Number 14, a resolution approving certification to the Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in the fiscal year 2022 Northeast Industrial Park Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Tax Increment District and place the certification on file. And number 15, a resolution, resolution approving certification to the Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in fiscal year 2022 RAP Area Tax Increment District and place the certification on file.
Second.
Alright, thank you, that motion's been made with the second, is there anyone that would like to comment on 12, 13, 14, or 15? Counsel? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, could someone take 16, 17, and 18, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving certification of the, to the Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify reimbursement in the FY 2022 San Martin TIF, Ta, San Martin Tax Increment District and place the certification on file. Number 17 is adopting a resolution approving certification to the Blackhawk County Auditor for expenditures that qualify reimbursement in the FY 22, 2022 University Avenue Waterloo Tax Increment District and place that certification on file. And number 18 is adopting a resolution approving certification to the Blackhawk County Auditor for fiscal year 2022 expenditures that qualify for reimbursement in the East Waterloo Unified Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Tax Increment District and place the certification on file.
Second.
Alright, that motion has been made with the second, any comments on those three items? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Just, just a comment on the, on the East Waterloo Urban United One, that is a huge district. Starts out at the airport, if I'm correct, Noel, goes down through downtown Waterloo, and then works all the way up to North Crossing. That, that's a big tax district, because this also includes all-in groceries, it includes KWWL, includes North Crossing, it includes the airport.
That is very true.
That's all I have to say, it's just a big district, that's all I can say.
Yeah, I think, you know, the thing is, combining the districts gave us an opportunity to be able to get some very much-needed help into North Crossing, as we know, so it is a, a large district, and we're starting to see some really good benefits from it, so point well taken, and, and absolutely. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Alright, 19, 20, and 21.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Bulk or Pinnacle Mechanical of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in conjunction with the Waterloo Center for the Arch Youth Pavilion Phase Two Boiler Replacement Project in the amount of $145,000, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Next is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Tallgrass Archaeology LLC of Iowa City, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed $24,894 in conjunction with the Phase One Archaeological Survey of the Waterloo EVA Fiber Optic Grant and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Finally, is a resolution approving supplemental agreement number three to a professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, originally executed June 26, 2017, in an amount not to exceed $357,500 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2023 Sanitary Sewer Gatewell Repairers Phase Two Contract Number 1071, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, are there any questions, anyone? Counsel? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Gre-
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.